Okay, everybody, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. Let's go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody, welcome to the Budget Work Session Meeting here August 18th, 2025. It's good to see you all in the audience and everybody on YouTube. Welcome, and we'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Benson.
Birch.
President.
Brunick.
Here.
Sarda.
Here.
Conkling.
Here.
Hanoff.
Here.
Mosher.
Here.
Spencer.
President.
Mayor Villanueva.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
Okay, next, we'll do public appearances. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come up to the microphone and appear? Okay, seeing no movement, we will move on to the presentation by the city manager of our proposed 2026 budget. Take it away.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission, public who are here and watching. I just want to roadmap first for you where we're going tonight and our timeline for the budget going forward. As I know, we have some new folks on the Commission who are experiencing their first budget, and also, we have folks in the audience. So tonight is a time where I'm going to present to you the budget that I put together. It's been online. I've got questions from you. I've got questions from the public. We've been discussing those things and going back and forth. And then what I'm going to do is revisit, I'm going to use the budget letter sort of as a guide, to revisit and present to you. So it's not a go-through each budget in each department, line by line by line. If you want to do that, we can, but we do know then we're going to need more than one meeting. If there's something you want to dig into deeper, certainly let me know what page you want to reference, and we can do that. Feel free to ask questions. I know you're going to have a time on your agenda to discuss the budget and have some communication. If we hear something different other than what I've presented to you, either in your budget on, in your packet, or that I say tonight, Lisa and I may make a change. We won't have a first reading until the 25th, but you're not voting on the budget tonight or voting on anything tonight. After the first reading, September 8th will be the second reading in public hearing. So on September 8th would be the meeting that you would make a motion to approve or approve with changes, something like that. And we may need to make some changes as well, based on what we hear, or based on things that change when we fully know where we are at for July with our sales tax. And if that occurs, then we would do a second second reading. I know that sounds counterintuitive, but Ross has guided us that if anything substantive changes between the time you conduct your first second reading, then you should really do a second second reading, so folks have the opportunity to come and talk to you or give you feedback or public input. And then that would be, I believe, September 22nd, if that should happen. So that's the roadmap for the budget and for what we're going to do tonight. I pass out to all of you this strategic planning document, and there's some back there as well, if folks in the audience want to take a look at that. And the reason why I wanted to make sure that you had it all in time for this meeting is because this is really what guides our budget, our budget plan. Last time we revisited, we updated our mission statement, we updated and assessed our values, we agreed on the trends that are going to drive our decisions. So tonight, I'm presenting a budget to you that should reflect this document, and it should reinstate sort of what we talked about last spring. Also, a lot of what you'll see is going to be based on the strategic plans that we've done in the past. So we do this because we make intentional decisions when we budget. We don't just see a mole and then whack it. We try to look for where the moles are going to run in the future, and then we plan for that. So that should be the guiding source of everything in our budget, and when times are lean, that even becomes more important. So we're going to talk about things that reflects that budget. There's two things that you know, but I'm going to restate them, commissioners, because I want to make sure that the public knows. Everyone's heard that the budgets in general for the state, for local entities, are not as robust, they're not projected to be as robust as they have been in the past, and that's true. The two things you should know is that myself, the leadership team, and all of our staff are committed and are going to continue to serve Yankton in a way that maximizes our resources, it's future-focused, and that prioritizes the things that are important to you, such as infrastructure. And you see there, you have many things under your category of infrastructure. We're also committed to the parks, the recreational opportunities, and the facilities that we've said are important for our community. We're committed to that, and we're going to continue to provide those services. What we won't do is sacrifice the integrity of our long-term vision because there's a short-term challenge. So we may have some things that come up this year that are difficult. We know that some of our partners and some of our other things happening in our country, in our state, in our community, face challenges, but we are not operating from a place of losing what we think is our long-term vision to solve short-term problems. So we'll talk about that, too, as we go along. We're also not going to sacrifice the integrity of what our vision is for things that are not our responsibility. There's a lot of great things that we could do, and you probably saw that in how I reflected the outside agency budget. And of course, it's your purview to change anything in your process that you'd like. To me, this isn't the time to take on, this isn't the time to add on, and to say yes to things that we're not sure that we can do, or not sure we can do well, while maintaining the basic core services that you have indicated are important to our future. So I say that because I'm not sure everybody always realizes, the budget is not our finances. The budget is just a plan. It's a compass, not a cage. We had a flood in 2019, and you guys had to make some budget decisions. So the budget shouldn't be viewed as something that's inflexible, but yet, at the same time, it's a plan, just like every other plan we do, and we want to make sure that we're thinking through it with intention. So water, wastewater, solid waste, streets, infrastructure, public safety, police, fire, dispatch, we're going to continue to certainly focus on those and maintain those as core services and put our emphasis there. Also, we're supporting those parks and library and special events, Summit Activity Center, Huether Family Aquatics Center. Some of those items that we've said as a community are important to maintain that social quality of life that we've we've come to expect and come to love in Yankton. But this is not the budget that I predicted that I would be presenting to you at the beginning of the year. Our sales tax is down, and indications for July look like it's going to continue to go down. So while that's not ideal, that's the position we find ourselves in today. So the math is really the math. Right now, inflation is approximately 2.7%, and we're down about 0.31%. When you take that with 2024's first and second penny sales tax revenue of $13,000, $13,268,861, that's approximately $400,000 each year, so $800,000 over the spread of two years. That's just the math. It's not my opinion, it's not good or bad, it's just the math. And so you can think about what $400,000 could fund in a year, and we have to make adjustments because that money is not there. We're projecting our revenue, and I hope that we're projecting low, and it comes in higher than that, but we don't have a guarantee otherwise. So that's why this budget does look a bit more conservative than it has in the past. We also had some things happen this year already that I certainly wasn't expecting, and I don't think the community was expecting. We lost a major employer and a major partner. Simples, as you know, was with our community for 80 years, and they provided a number of good-paying jobs, and those people went to school here, they went to church with us, they bought things here, contributed to our sales tax, and they were utility customers. And so losing that takes a bite, and we'll continue to feel that throughout the year and maybe on into the future. We do have partnerships with Thrive to hopefully that working together with them, and we can fill that void in our community, but for the time being, that's not employing anyone. Not only were their employees utility customers, but they were our biggest water and sewer customers for the city. So water and wastewater revenue is down already. Just by means an example, through July of 2024, we had sold 383 million gallons of water. Through July 25, we've only sold 329 million gallons of water. So that's down 14%, but our costs to operate have gone up. You know, electricity in our new water plant has gone up, and our wastewater facility, electricity has gone up. So we can't just blame the loss of Simples, of course, although we wish that they were still here. We can blame Mother Nature, and that's just how it is, and you can't fight Mother Nature. She's a woman, so she's stubborn, she's going to do what she wants to do, and that's what she's doing. And while our grass all looks green and it's wonderful, we're in the business of selling water, folks, and I know you know that because previous Commissions that a couple of you were a part of indicated that, hey, this has to make sense for us to move into this realm of this reverse osmosis water treatment plant. And you've visioned that we want to continue to do things like be a regional water supplier, which environmentally, we have the capacity to do. But if it keeps raining, nobody's going to want our water. So that's just one of those challenges that we have to face. But we, that is a reality in that department and in that enterprise, those enterprise funds. So just wanted to bring that forward. It's disingenuous for me to say that I cut the budget by $21,304,440, but I just want to say that because it feels really good. This budget is less than last year's. Last year's budget was over $93 million. This year's budget is $72 million, and I won't give you all the other numbers there in your budget to take a look at. That's because primarily of the projects that we're doing and the money that we've spent. So Kyle has done a great job. He did a great job securing funds for the wastewater plant and the water treatment plant, but now he's doing a great job spending funds for the wastewater treatment plant. So that's where a lot of that, those dollars have gone. So when you look at that, I mean, you can say, wow, she's great at cutting the budget and leaning down, but in reality, we're spending money that we've planned to spend based on our vision and our mission and the things that we said we are going to do. So also important that you know that I want the public to know that our general fund without carryover from other places is about $4.6 million. We budget to zero, so we don't have a reserve, things like that. What isn't spent is carried over to next year. That's important for people to think about because we've committed over $20 million, 20.8 million in the budget, and we're projecting about $16 million per revenue. So without carryover, we won't, we won't be able to do it, and our department heads know that. We've already adjusted the sales because the winds changed. So we'll see that, you'll hear me talking about that, and you'll continue to see that in the 2026 budget and going further. One of the things that we don't want to sacrifice, and you've told us that that's important, is our levels of service and the methods of service. And so we want to maintain the levels of service that we have and the methods of service we have. There's quite a few things that we stated in our mission and goals that don't cost anything. Working with the public with integrity, being welcoming, being resilient, being service-oriented, and future-focused, those don't, those things don't cost a dime, except having the muscle. The fat is out of the government budget, I would say that at the state level, I would say that at the county level, I would say that at the city level. What we don't want to do is cut the muscle, and that's the people, and we certainly don't want to cut the bones, which is our infrastructure, and you've stated that indirectly when we talked at our strategic planning meetings, both with the staff and you as a Commission. I think there's a lot of good news. I think the community believes in this document as well, and what we think is a good way to govern and a good way to spend their dollars, their taxpayers' dollars. Avera, for example, is working on the Cancer Center. That's a huge investment in Yankton and a huge investment in our future. I happen to have the opportunity now to sit on that board. Those are smart folks on that board. They're smart people running that organization. They wouldn't invest there if they didn't think that Yankton had a future. Elkhorn Valley Bank is bringing it, building a new facility on the north of town. Yankton Mall, we all heard about that. Whether or not folks thought that was a good idea or not, lots of talk around that. It's positive indicators that people see a future in Yankton, and if they didn't see that future, they wouldn't be investing their dollar here. There's a SureCo expansion going on. Garden Estates is ready to go. I'm sure Thrive would sell you a lot if you want one. So we'll do a little advertising there, but that's also an indication of Yankton's future and where we need to be looking at the positive indicators that, yes, this is a bump, but not a car crash. Theater restoration, I just heard on the radio today that Saratoga is donating as well to Lewis and Clark Theater. I have that in your budget. I think that's part of what we should do as a bi, it's not bicentennial, is it semi-quintennial? The 250th, until I can pronounce that. That is part of that quality of life. So those aren't things that we're necessarily taking the lead on, but by supporting them, I think, shows that the community believes in the downtown, which is the heart of our community, and we're supporting that if that's approved in your budget. Single-family home starts are down. That's true. I'm not sure if that's because of building costs or interest rates, or just folks being uneasy about the economy. Could be a little bit of all of that, but we have seen that go down this year. Hopefully, we'll see that turnaround in the future. Property tax, you all know about Senate Bill 216. Right now, it's unlikely that Yankton County would be impacted by that, but I would be I would be certain that in the 2026 legislative session that there's going to be some bill associated with property tax or a change to the bill that they're talking about. So I think we just need to keep our eye on that. We operate mostly on sales tax, but we're part of the county, so we need, we need to be concerned about where their financial position is. And we also need to realize that that impacts us and impacts our community as well, based on what that, that level is. Questions so far? I know I'm not really into the meat yet, but just see if folks have questions.
Amy, I have a quick question. Does everybody have this, this sheet in the audience?
No, probably not, because usually, we just have staff here, but I'm sure the staff would be happy to relinquish their version, too, because they're going to memorize it anyway.
That's right. Well, I was just going to say, could we throw it up, if Dwayne has it, could we just put it up on the board behind us, too?
I'm not sure if Dwayne has it. We'll be putting it on our website if it's not already. I just got it from Hanson Briggs.
Oh, so it's hot off the press.
It's hot off.
Fair enough. Okay.
So, and if folks don't have it, maybe they can take a look at it and pass it around a little bit. People will be seeing this a lot, and if it's not on the website already, we'll be putting it up on the website and sharing it. It's also would be on the website as part of your packet last week on August 11th, if people want to take a look at that.
Sounds good. One last question, too, for the public. So as they're watching this and listening and doing their due diligence and homework online, if they have questions or want to give suggestions, do they just email, or can they call City Hall? What would be best for them?
They can do either. Email is really best because then, you know, you can digest and answer exactly what they're, what they're asking, but you can certainly call City Hall. You can talk to Lisa or I. We'll get back to folks if they have questions. The budget's been available at City Hall. It's also been available at the library, and it's been on our website. We have a Citizens Guide to the Budget. And the folks that I typically hear from, I've heard from, and I've answered questions, and if there's more questions to come, I'm happy to work with them and talk with them or meet with them. Not tomorrow, but any other day.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Something on the calendar tomorrow, but yes, and that's part of why we, I don't want to say drag out, but part of the reason why we pace our budget the way we pace it, and we start in May. Department heads start in April. We start talking with you about it in May and June because there's a lot in the budget, and there's a lot of opportunity. So we try to look at things cumulatively and what we hear throughout the year. So you have a list of 2025 projects and things that were completed, and I won't go through all those because many of those projects are still ongoing, and you see them when you try to go down Walnut Street or, or as you're trying to head around Fair Valley Road. We're closing up those projects. We still have a few more road construction and our transportation projects going. Next year, since the budget is not our financial statement, just projecting revenue and expenditures based on what we think is going to happen, you probably will not hear me say, it's budgeted. That's a favorite thing city managers and city finance officers and department heads like to say. We like to shrug our shoulders and go, well, it's budgeted. Well, typically, when it's budgeted, we all feel pretty confident moving forward. You know, next year, we're going to be looking at whether or not the revenue supports the project rather than, well, it's budgeted. Of course, we want it to be budgeted, and we hope that something is budgeted that doesn't come up unexpectedly, but we want to make sure that revenue supports the project. So that means that some of the projects that we anticipate might get reevaluated. They may be pushed in the capital plan, if we can push them. Expenditures of some equipment may be pushed. We might look at, you know, the hours of time on a piece of equipment, or we may look at if we purchase a new vehicle, can another department use that, or can we wait longer? Because that's just the world we're in. Any change in our economic position really means we're going to change what we spend, and that is how it is. I feel uneasy about the economy. I feel uneasy about our revenue. I know that this weekend will help, and Riverboat Days is always a boost for us, but we really need more than a boost, and it's not there right now. I'm not a Debbie Downer, but I'm just a realist, so we're already making adjustments. We've done some limited things. We've limited some things like conferences and travel. We're limiting some things that are not essential for our employees. We're looking at holding off on a few things. If things come in overbid, you've experienced that, I think, last meeting or the meeting before, we say, this is a lot higher than we estimated. We just don't think we should do that. Now, there is the philosophy that a project might not be cheaper next year, but we need to be a little more careful as we step forward in the future with those types of things. So you'll see that while there might be something budgeted, one example, facade grant program, that's budgeted, but I might come to you and say, yep, we budgeted for that, but the revenue really isn't supporting that. Is that an essential? It's a great thing to do. We've enjoyed that. The community's enjoyed that. Maybe that's something we should do every other year. When we were uneasy about COVID, we talked about maybe we do that every other year. Maybe things that are successful don't always have to be repeated. That, you know, I mean, perhaps there's a new idea out there as well that we can talk about. I just want to signal that. I hope I'm wrong, but if we get to March of, of next year, this is when we typically start our facade program, I'll visit with community development, and we'll see if we think that that's an appropriate step forward, and I'll probably be communicating with you more about initiating that. So just because you approve it in the budget doesn't necessarily mean that it's something that we'll end up following through with if it doesn't support the main priorities that we've talked about as being essential for operating our community. Rates. I want to talk about water rates, wastewater rates, solid waste rates. So as you know, whenever I talk about rates, we talk about them being adjusted, which means increasing. That's government speak for increasing. So we're adjusting, a proposed adjusting to the water rate 3%. And for the typical water user, that's about 95 cents. We're suggesting, adjusting the wastewater rate 3%. And this surcharge that will be applied in November based on the low SRF loans and funding for the wastewater plant will be the last surcharge. So folks who've been paying attention, I think we've had four years of surcharge. So the wastewater, 3% is 36 cents plus about $7, I believe, for a surcharge, so we're looking at $7.31 a month increase on wastewater. Solid waste is, we're projecting right now 3% as what we believe we'll, we'll come back to you with our rates in November. However, Vermillion has asked us to visit with them about our tipping fees, which, as you know, we pay tipping fees when we bring our loads over to Vermillion, or, and folks pay us tipping fees when we, when they, private haulers bring their loads to us. So that might not be the same number. 3% in wastewater is about 80 cents, or excuse me, in solid waste is 80 cents, but that may not be the number we bring to you because we have to be able to afford the tipping fees that, that we set, and you'll be a part of that rate change, of course, as well, as you are with all of our rates. You know, that's a, that's a marriage we're in with Vermillion, Clay County, Yankton County, and we have to make sure we can cover our expenses. Same with water and wastewater. 3% is greater than inflation. In some cases, these are rates that are required to meet our debt service, and when we take SRF loans, I think it's 105%, Lisa, is that right? 110%. We have to be 100, our rates have to show we're covered 110% of what we've borrowed. Also, as I mentioned, our operating costs have gone up as well. So we are empathetic that our rates for, for utilities sting, especially if you're on a fixed income and your income doesn't go up. We're aware of that. And we also have to make sure we can continue to provide those services as, because they're essential for the community. So the basic, if this doesn't change too much, the common user, average user would see about a $9 and a $9.11 increase, give or take, a month in their utility rates. Personnel, I don't have a clear answer for you yet, other than, like I said, they're the muscle. And so we have to have the folks that are providing the services. We're negotiating right now with our two contracted labor unions, the Fraternal Order of Police and the American Federation of State and County Municipal Employees. We do have in our salary step plan, 1.26%. That has been budgeted and then we're negotiating, as you know, the cost of living increases with our employees. So, you know, by the time we have a tentative agreement and we bring to you a salary resolution, we're really making a promise. When you pass the budget for the outside agencies, we're not entering a new contract like we are with the labor unions. But we're making a commitment. So we want to make sure that we're certain on those things. But, you know, the wages is a part of a contract and they'll also have other items that are not associated with wages but are associated with employment terms that will be in those contracts as well. Hoping for three-year contracts on both of those. I say that because some of those things, while they're not financial, they may not be financial dollars and cents. They have impacts on your budget when we talk about hours and call-in and all those types of things. So we are trying to keep up, though, with inflation, at least with employees, because they're, just like everyone else and all of our other citizens, they feel the rate increases and their costs have gone up at the grocery store and as they pay their bills as well. And so we want to make sure we're being fair with them. And we put the money to invest in them so they stay with us and stay engaged. Health insurance, that's always an unknown right now. As the commission knows, we use Avera Health Plans. It's our current provider. We've budgeted a 10% increase. We're getting quotes now. We're not sure what that increase will end up being, but we're working with our health insurance committee, which has members from both our labor unions and nonrepresented folks. Any change to the health plan has to be negotiated. So if we change coverage or we change providers, we will have to negotiate that. This year, our health insurance committee has gone out for quotes again from all providers. We want to make sure we're getting the most, the best deal for our employees and the best coverage for our employees. So they've also looked at self-funded plans and variations of self-funded plans. So if that ever is something that the commission feels is worthwhile, that may be an opportunity. The school district operates that way. I don't think that will be the case for us this year, but we're starting to look at those types of things as well. Just so we can remain nimble in case we do need to or want to make a change. Other things that it's good for you to know, and a lot of people have asked me, "Oh, wow, why does it look like the operating budgets are so high this year in the departments?" And if you have specific questions for specific departments, they'll tell you why. But as you know, you've changed your capital threshold. So things that used to be in capital are now in operating and maintenance. Things that used to, you know, we used to buy that way. We can now, with the capital threshold being higher, put into operating and maintenance. And it does really make sense, especially when we're operating from a place where we know that the street shop is going to buy things to, you know, maintain the equipment that they're using. And so your capital budget looks smaller, the operating budgets look higher. So we can talk about any specifics if somebody wants to know, "Hey, why is, you know, police operating in maintenance or professional services? Why did that go up so much? What's all in there?" We can tell you those things that are planned. But if revenue doesn't support them, we may or may not be doing them, depending upon what they are. Other things to know, we've started a new financial software. So this is the last year the budget will probably look like it does today. You've seen some changes already, but we're hoping that this will, financial software will be more efficient, require less manual entry. Also, our old financial software, I think, if we're being polite, we would say was antiquated. We can't operate that way anymore. It's like, you know, me taking a covered wagon to work and I can't even park in the spots we got. So I definitely couldn't park the covered wagon. There's a few people that know how to operate it, but no one understands it. Difficult for manipulating and getting the reports and information we need. And we're in this place where we're making database decisions. Well, if you have to call Lori six times and Dwayne twice and Lisa four, and then they give you four spreadsheets and then we create a spreadsheet in Excel to get one answer for one individual, that's not really a great way to do finances anymore. And so this will be a lot more efficient. And once we all learn how to operate it, I think we'll be happy with it. It does come with a cost, of course. You know, because you purchased it and it should be online next spring, automated garbage trucks. So we're, are looking not just to do things the same way all the time, but we're looking at ways to do things that will be more efficient and hopefully better use of taxpayer dollars. We're using AI when we can. It's not quite there, but when we can use AI to do research or pull together things, we do that and try to make the information that we're providing as accurate as possible. But you can't use AI to walk through the park at Riverboat Days. You can't use AI to, you know, help someone who has, you know, a fire in their home. We still need the folks that we rely on to do that. So that won't solve everyone's problems. But it does help us be a little quicker to play street lawyer, where we can work on some things and then get it to Ross to read a draft, as opposed to saying, "Here, Ross, build the plane and then teach us how to fly it." We try to build a little bit of the plane and then he tells us if it's going to crash or not. But, so there are some helpful ways to do that. As I wait for your questions, I would just make a few recommendations. Is that we revisit, and we haven't done this before, but we have some budget discussions throughout the course of the year. How it's going, where we are sales tax-wise and what that means. I think month by month, we need to talk a little bit about our sales tax revenue, as opposed to just go, "Oh, it's down. Oh, it's up a little bit." You know, what that really means, where the rubber hits the road in terms of what we can do and what we cannot do. I think that folks should expect that the method in which we provide services may change. So I know what we just talked about, one example, you know, the automated arm on the garbage truck. That's a change in how we provide the service. Those things are on the horizon. Lisa's continually looking at ways that we can make utility billing more efficient. And we're using more information on even our water meters so we can be able to tell people when they come to us, you know, saying, "Oh, I'm not sure if I have a leak." We can look in real time if their water's running or not. That's a little spooky, but it's also helpful when we're looking at being able to project expenditures. And it's helpful for the resident as well to know what's going on in their home. Now is probably not a good year to expand services, to take on big things or new initiatives until we know our position a little bit more. Maybe by the end of this fiscal year, as we enter 2026, we'll feel a lot more confident. But I think we're going to need to just keep our eyes open a little bit more than we have in the past. And if it's not an emergent or urgent request, maybe it's not something that we fund this year. You know, saying no is one thing, but one, another thing is maybe, "Oh, that's a great idea. Not this year." It might be the way to respond to those questions or those requests. Now, that leaves me with a few things for you to talk about and think about. One being the 250th. Is that emergent? Nope. Is it a core service? Absolutely not. Is it as important as the streets? Fire, wastewater, water? Probably not. I've budgeted to do a little more for the 250th. We talked about the flag project that you invested in with the veterans as being part of that 250th. I think our Lewis and Clark, if approved, contribution to the Dakota Theater is a way to celebrate the 250th. It used to be, maybe 200 years ago, they built a building. But maybe if we can contribute to an effort to restore one, that could be something we could celebrate. We've put additional funds in the downtown for music at the Meridian and the special events. That's up to you. That can be taken out of the budget. Those things can be decided upon later on. But I know I've heard from the Parks Department that, you know, they're planning already what's going to happen next year. So we can't wait too long before we know sort of where the commission's feelings are on booking, entertainment, et cetera. But things to think about. Lots of questions about the library. Well, what does that mean for the library? Dana and I are going to be meeting with the Library Board of Trustees and Commissioner Birch is your liaison in September. And we're going to be talking to them about just that. What does that mean? You know, I guess a year ago today, I thought we'd be much further ahead and we'd be talking to you about moving into designing whatever it is, wherever it's going to be, so that we could get a cost estimate and start talking to the community about whatever the project was going to be. I don't know that it's forthright to ask the community right now when we're concerned about our basic operations and our basic commitments and our basic responsibilities that we've already said that we're going to do. I don't know if it's forthright and honest to push forward another project. Well, when is a good time? So I don't have all the answers. You have the answers. You were elected to have the answers, so you'll tell me. But I think we have to think about that. The library is part of our general fund, too. We're going to be challenged to operate our departments and our services as they are. So that's something we should really think about when we move forward or if we move forward. So I want to talk to the trustees about it. They're the library experts. I want to see what their opinions and thoughts are. You know, we would need to identify revenue sources for operation. You know, and that's not necessarily a complete negative. We do that all the time for parks and it's not a big shocker that the parks doesn't bring in a lot of money. I mean, they're supported by the general fund, but we support SAC and, you know, we'll be supporting the Aquatic Center with transfers. We do that. So it's not out of this world that that's what would happen. But is that the responsible thing to do in a time where we're looking at, you know, being very careful? That's your guys' decision. But we do want to talk about those things just openly and honestly because that's part of what we said we were going to do and we were going to be engaged and transparent with people. So that's where we are and I had hoped that that's where we weren't. Because I would much, much rather be presenting you a budget where I show you, you know, we're either, where our facility is going to be and what it's going to look like and how we're going to pay for it. And I'm just not sure that the timing's right. So we'll be talking to trustees and talking to you about it in the future. But we do have funds budgeted in the library for talking about planning and things like that. And not all planning has to stop just because we're not necessarily moving forward with the project. But I just think that it's fair for the public to hear that. But that's a question I've gotten a lot and often. So that's what I have for you today. Except I might have some answers if you have questions about specifics in the budget or general items in the budget.
I have a specific, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Page 48 under the library. It shows on that right-hand column at the bottom, books, $0, AV, capital zero. Are they just not buying any books next year or?
No books for the library. You don't need books anymore. No, but I have to get to that page. Dana, do you want to go up to the mic on the other side there? If you would, please.
That was all moved to 209, which is circulating materials. So moved into operating just in a different category and that goes in with eBooks, too.
Amy, I had a question on the water revenues from the new plant. I know Kyle talked about Nebraska Rule Water will be purchasing water from us. Is there a timeline when that starts? What's the anticipated gallonage? And do you have income budgeted for 2026 from that?
Let's let Mr. Goodman come to the mic.
Good evening. We're hoping it'll be late this fall. It could have fallen next spring before they actually start purchasing water from us. Estimation is about 800,000 gallons per day would be the max. We'll probably start closer on 300,000 to 400,000 in that first year or two.
How do you think that will impact revenues, Kyle?
We do sell them for a bulk rate, so their rate is lower. So their impact will not be as great as like the simple loss. But we will make up some of that revenue, not quite half.
I had a few questions about the fire department budget.
Okay.
Three items I saw in particular that really jumped. Medical supplies went from 1,000 to 9,000. Small tools went from 3,000 to 19,000. And repairs and maintenance of equipment went from, up 500% from 20,000 to 102,000. And I imagine some of that you're going to say is due to the capital versus operating. But that one that went up from 20 to 102, that seemed pretty high of a jump there.
Yes. I'll let Daniel or Chief Linky, whoever's taking that. And while I'm, while he's making his way over there, too, I also want to talk to you about the fire engine one. That's slated for your agenda for next week. And just want to let you know that we'll be bringing that forward to you under the Sourcewell contract. We've been planning that for a number of years, that purchase. And that's a big dollar, big-ticket piece of equipment. So my guts kind of churned when I was like, "Oh, here we go, this, you know, in this budget time and this." To me, it's pretty clear that that's one of those things that you can't, you can't do without and you can't go too long without. We'll talk about it more next week. But, you know, so it's not to say that we're not going to be doing things. We're going to do things that make sense and we're going to be more intentional about the things that matter to our community, which is, you know, the things that we've been doing well. Sorry, chief.
No, that's okay.
Medical supplies.
Medical supply, did you want medical supplies or did you want the 221? You had the, that had the biggest jump from...
221, 243, and 247. The 221 is...
Yeah, so 221, yeah, $20,000 to $102,000. So a lot of that stuff moved over from capital. Normally, about $25,000 in capital goes to PPE, so personal protective equipment. So to outfit our firefighters, it's about 5,000 bucks per firefighter. And so we try to purchase about five sets of that bunker gear per year, so that's the reason for that. Then you can add another $34,000 for hose and nozzle that was in the capital budget for the years prior. $2,400 for pagers, $7,000 for thermal imaging cameras. And then just shy of $10,000 to update ladder equipment. So that gives us just about $98,000. And so because right about September, October, when we start talking to salespeople, they say, "Yeah, we're going to have a 4% price increase on this, that, or the other thing." So that was a little bit of a cushion there as well.
Average for 221 has only been 12,000 the last three years. So you can see why we see that as quite a jump.
Sure, yeah.
We used to buy the PPE, we'd buy it all in one lot. And that changed a few years ago to cycle through a bit, so we're not facing a huge bill all at one time. But they've done a good job in the fire department of not replacing things. Some of the things have to be replaced, you know, just per the standards. Like I think they're called the regulations. they're called the regulators. I'm going to show my ignorance here. The regulators, things like that. Some of the things have to be replaced, certain things, you know, if they can make them, if they're in good shape, they keep them. And fire departments that way, all departments that way. So, you know, they purchased radios, maybe they need to purchase, maybe they have five budgeted, but really only three need to be, to be replaced. We've replaced three.
And if this helps also in reference to 243, medical and safety supplies, 1,000 to 9,000, we, we were budgeting a $7,700 increase to start getting our firefighters' individual facepieces, because right now whoever gets on the apparatus to put on a facepiece for their self-contained breathing apparatus, it's, it's whatever's there. And the national and industry standard is actually to have a facepiece fitted per OSHA for every firefighter. So we were going to start doing that next year. We did just get a grant from the state, or were notified that we received a grant for $11,250 that will go to those facepieces. So that'll help us quite a bit with that, and we certainly could look again at what that particular part of the budget looks like for next year. In regard to small tools and hardware, 247, from 3,000 to 19,000. We have a rescue truck with a lot of confined space equipment, rope rescue equipment, extrication, trench, collapse equipment and stuff that is 20 to 25 years old, and so it's way outdated. And so we wanted to start getting some of that stuff updated for, for whatever eventuality occurs there.
I'd like to ask one other question on the fire department, Chief Linky, and actually, probably not even, shouldn't be directed to you perhaps. It's the cost of insurance for the fire department has risen markedly over the last few years. Aside from just going up, have we checked with other insurance carriers to see if there's a better rate out there or just where that stands?
Well, we're part of the, and that might be a question better for Lisa as to why it's increased, but we're part of the pool with the league, so we could leave that, but I think that's probably the best, going to be our best rate. Do you know, happen to know, Lisa, about the increase?
The fire department is covered through Smith Insurance, so that is some historical background to it. I think a big increase on that was because, I think, two, three years ago, we used to only pay the city's portion of insurance. In the past couple of years, we've paid the city and rural side, and Rural Fire has reimbursed us for their portion. So that kind of was a huge change on just the billing aspect on our end.
Yeah, so it shows up as, I think, a $55,000 request, and I can't remember what the rural reimburses us, but it's a pretty good amount.
I want to say it's at least almost half, is what I, is what I recall. But that was something with how insurance started billing us differently, and it ended up where Rural Fire was reimbursing us for this portion. So on our side, if there is a reimbursement that does not reduce our expenditure, expenditure still matches the entire amount of cash outflow.
Our work comp is associated with the pool, the same insurance that...
That's correct.
Yeah.
I just want to add something. This is kind of a unique situation, because the public should know that I am on the fire department. So when I'm on the fire department, I technically have my boss sitting here answering questions. But, but I do want to, I do want to make a comment. I really do appreciate the separate facepieces. I do, actually, I think that's very important. It's very nice and sanitary to have your own facepiece. You always have it with you. It's always there. You know you're going to have one that fits well. My question would be also, then, does that include, like, the fit testing equipment, then, for all the facepieces, or how would that work?
Does not yet include the fit testing equipment. However, Vermillion has fit testing equipment and has agreed to allow us to use theirs, so at no cost. So that's a partnership that we've been developing with them.
Awesome. Thanks, Chief.
Other questions about anything in the budget? I had a, like, 16 hours in an airport last weekend, so I had a whole notebook of things I could talk to you about, kind of excited about it.
When you talk about sales tax, does that include the amounts that we're rebating when we talk about the dollars?
Yes. So you've seen in your budget where we show the rebate, that the hard thing is there. I'm not a good enough economist to know how much are people going to buy, you know, so how much revenue will come in, and how much will be new? Will there be some cannibal, you know, cannibalism where maybe somebody's shopping there and they would have shopped somewhere else? And how much will be brand-new? And maybe our other existing places will, will benefit because of those anchors, you know? So somebody may come to Hobby Lobby, and who wouldn't otherwise come to Yankton, and then they'll go downtown, or they'll go across the street and get their, get their groceries. So that's a really hard thing to project. So, you know, that's the other thing with our budget, I guess. I didn't, I didn't talk about that probably as fully as I should. We are going to see some new sales tax, and it's going to be great. We've rebated, we're rebating that. Now, over time, we think that's, you, the commission has told, and the community's told us that they want that investment, but in the short run, we're not going to see that going back into the general fund.
A positive, though, if I'm not mistaken, the Menards rebate matures this year or early next year?
Yes, it does. So that's a good thing, and that's, you know, one of the benefits of doing those things. I wasn't part of the economic development package, but that included a tax increment district and then that sales tax rebate, and that applied to not just Menards, but also the Culvers. And I don't know that they would have come without those, and I think that's been an add to what we can offer in Yankton, and also spurred some growth out there.
I think the Menards rebate averages about 400 and some thousand a year, so that's going to be a nice boost to our collections.
It will be good to have those retired.
I agree. Going with the, the sales tax rebate, I'm seeing, we're looking at doing half of it from the general fund and half of it from the BBB. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I might ask Dwayne to chime in there, how we landed on...
Half from second penny, a quarter from general.
And a quarter from BBB. So it's halved and quartered.
Okay, so it's, it's half from the general fund?
Half from the, half from second penny, quarter from the BBB.
Okay.
Quarter from the general fund.
Okay. But the sales tax rebate is on just the first and second penny? But we're deciding...
The state still gets their sales tax.
Yes, absolutely. Our, our sales tax is the first and second penny, but we're choosing to rebate a quarter of it out of the BBB due to it being economic development? I know that, I know that you've got these different pots, I know.
Yeah, we didn't, I mean, there was no clear path on how we should do it. We thought that the mall in general, because it includes some new and unknown things, probably is going to include something that is BBB-related, so restaurant, packaged food, things like that. We also saw it as something where we think some folks are going to come to Yankton because of the particular anchor stores that are there. So that's why we were comfortable doing it from, a portion of it from BBB, knowing that not all of it was probably appropriate for BBB. But if you want to split it up differently, we can. We just didn't, we, we did the best we could with, with what it was, and the numbers are estimate, we don't, like I said, we don't know the numbers. Those are going to open pre-Christmas, so after this year, we may have a little bit better of an idea and better to make some adjustments, but that's what we're thinking.
Sure, and I'm just looking for, so everybody knows what, what our plan is. So we've got the mall. I think we also have the Gale sales tax rebate. I think there were a couple of them that...
Yep, Gale Drive. We still have one.
But, but we're, that we're looking to do the quarter from the BBB, if I have that correct.
Gale Drive is probably different.
I think it was the, it was the sales tax rebate for Gale.
Yeah, but we may have done that different. Lisa probably has that spreadsheet up, so we might have to hold till she can pull that up. That was not in my notes.
While Lisa's looking that up, I have a question, too. And again, just to clarify, anybody, anything that, any entity that comes to the mall will only qualify for that rebate if there, if it's leak, not, if it's considered leakage, correct?
Well, if it's considered leakage or something new, or a substantial expansion on something that, you know, we currently don't have, or we currently have somewhere else, so, yeah, we, that's in, I believe in the agreement, that's my discretion, but if I have a question about whether or not it would apply, I would take it to you all to discuss.
And that's the point I want to make, is that it is possible that if it's not leakage, then it could, there could be...
Yeah, it could still go in the mall, but it would be taxed, you know, fully.
Right.
And Matt Evans is aware of that. Oh, thank you. Look at that.
I'm not 100% sure this is the last version, but it's probably pretty cool.
Yes, so these are our sales tax rebates that are current, and where they are appropriated, and their expiration dates. So if they don't meet the threshold, they expire within the date.
And as we look at that, the 50%, 50%, was that what I was thinking it was before, where it was 50% out of BBB and 50% out of general or... Dwayne, can you explain the 50, 50, 50%?
Yeah, so my best guess, based on...
Dwayne, can I get you to do the mic? I'm sorry.
No problem. My best guess was I tried to use 400,000 on an annual basis. Because of the fact that we don't have any history, I tried to use, read between the lines on what they anticipated for a repayment schedule. So I estimated 400,000 on an annual basis in tax revenue, and so that split would be 200,000 second penny, 100,000 BBB, 100,000 general fund. And part of the logic behind that was, as Amy mentioned, that potentially there might be a business that might generate some BBB revenue. There may be some sales tax leakage from one business to another in town, you know, maybe, you know, Walmart sells less craft supplies and they buy it at Hobby Lobby, and so we don't end up with a net gain. And in light of the, a little bit limited ability to generate new revenue in the general fund, I was, it was difficult to try to fund the whole 50% out of there, not knowing how the exact tax makeup would end up being.
Thank you.
And if, and if anybody wants bad news?
Sure.
So this is July.
Oh, we do have July?
Yeah, it just got posted this afternoon after 4 o'clock.
I can't see that.
Minus 3.82.
It's not really a mic drop number.
No, that doesn't bode well, but we have, like I say, the new mall sales coming, just Riverboat Days isn't included there. I will say that I think it's smart that you budget conservatively. I think you estimate a 1%, or you're budgeting a 1% increase for 2026, is that right?
Yeah, I think we said zero for, zero for 2025. We'd readjust it, and then 1% for 2026.
But if anybody's looking for something to be optimistic about, the, the sales tax has exceeded your budget projection nine out of the last 10 years, so maybe that'll happen again.
I hope so, and I love being wrong there. You know, I always, you know, this isn't, you know, magic. This is just, to me, this isn't my money. This is everyone else's money. And so the way I look at it is, how would I want to spend my money? You know, I wouldn't want to just, I, I wouldn't want to not be okay with what I have to do, the bills I have to pay. I want to be able to do some fun things. I want to once-in-awhile do some big things, but I, I can't overcommit and underperform with other people's dollars, because they're, you know, I got to look them in the face of Walmart and Walgreens and the Hy-Vee. So I think that's important. That's why my projections have been that's, that way, and I've gotten some criticism for that. But I think we can always spend what we didn't expect to have, but we can't, you know, come up with dollars that we've already spent.
I got a comment, Amy, and, and I appreciate your efforts on putting the budget together. I know, I know it's not an easy task, and I think it's come pretty close to it. You need to make it fit. I want to change that a little bit and, and change this to a little more proactive statement, while we're talking about cuts and this, whatever. What are we going to do to grow ourselves with our, with our tail sales tax? And so I think, I challenge, I challenge this commission, I challenge the Thrive folks, I challenge economic development people that, how do we promote Yankton as a destination point to continue to grow sales tax? And I think that's where we got to turn this thing around and stop this trend, if that's what it is, with really great new assets in town that we can promote, that we, that we take an effort. Maybe it'll be some monies that we have budgeted for, something that maybe we thought was going to be bigger, and we can maybe transfer some of that money later. I don't even know if it's too late to do something for the holiday campaign season that the stores will be opening by then, but I just challenge us to try to grow, you know, try to grow yourself out of this thing and be aggressive, because it's a, it's a dog-eat-dog world out there. I mean, everyone's competing for the dollars that will go to Sioux City, Sioux Falls, Norfolk, you pick it. And so I just think that's a challenge we could look forward to, and I look forward to trying, trying to turn that around.
Yeah, I agree, and the commissioner noticed that I didn't make any cuts to Thrive, and the city has been a long-term partner with Thrive, and they've done some things. You know, Westbrook Estates, 73, I think, or 74, single-family homes, 144 apartments, nine townhomes. This is one of the notes I made. The Manitou expansion, you know, is 50 new hires. Thrive has done that work, and we weren't, we, the city of Yankton, weren't going to, you know, be the developers, or, you know, develop a housing, you know, a housing development. We weren't going to do that. Clearly, it's those types of things that move the needle for growth, and they risk, they're risking on Garden Estates, and I'm thinking that that, you know, the risk is calculated. So I'm positive, as you are, that this isn't a long-term situation, but it's the situation we find ourselves in, so we are going to have to be aggressive as a community, not just either commercial-wise, but also tourism-wise. We have a lot of opportunity, and maybe in a year when people don't feel as confident about going to Disneyland, they will come to Lewis and Clark, and they will enjoy, you know, more regional tourism.
I have some comments, and I'm going to slightly disagree with you on Thrive there, and I'll explain in a minute. First of all, I just want to ask the commission to kind of reevaluate something that's come up in the past. We've talked about cooperating with the county, and I think at some point, the city's going to have to help contribute to the ambulance. They're losing over $200,000 a year at the county through the ambulance. It's not mandatory, and they have, actually, I've heard people encourage the commissioners to just drop it. And if that happens, the city's going to pick it up and have to pick up all of it. So I think at some point, some, some money needs to be taken from somewhere else and help that, because 92% of the calls are in the city limits. That's just my opinion, and something for you to think about. I disagree with you on Thrive, and I've got a list of reasons why. First of all, I asked Nancy, when Annie, I've had people ask me, so specifically, what does Thrive do for the average citizen? I asked Nancy to give me a list of things. She wouldn't. So here's some information. Thrive owns 104 parcels. They don't pay property tax on all of them, including their main building. So that, that's a burden to the citizens. They have to pick up the slack. They use TIFs or TIDS on almost all their projects. I've got the plans for the Garden Estates and the supposed apartment complex by Manitou, and if you look at their projected property tax revenue, they're already behind, and the apartment complex isn't going to be built. So that's going to be a burden on the taxpayers, too, because they're going to have to pick up the tab for that. The CEO is paid almost $140,000 a year, which is about $211,000 in compensation. That's more than double the median family income of Yankton or the state. And I believe if a nonprofit can pay their CEO that much, they don't need taxpayer money. I need to verify this, but I'd like to know if, when they do a project, if they put out bids for everybody to bid, to bid on it, or just Thrive members? If they don't do it for everybody, they shouldn't be getting taxpayer dollars. They're getting taxpayer money from those businesses. They should be allowed to bid for that. We've asked for copies of their minutes of their meetings. They refused to give them to us. They're a nonprofit taking taxpayer dollars, the minutes for their meetings... The minutes for their meetings should be unredacted and placed on their website for all citizens to see, because they're using citizens' taxpayer dollars. That's only fair. This isn't a mandatory service for the community. We have other things to worry about, so we can provide for the community. You can say economic development all you want, but if you read the definition of economic development, it says it has to improve the quality of life for the community and the citizens. And what I've seen is it helps some, a small group of people increase their business and revenue, but it puts a burden on a lot of the taxpayers. So I would like to recommend that we cut that in half to 230 instead of the 460 and use that money, because you talked about being down 400,000, that we use that for other services. Thank you.
Just a reminder, thanks for the comments, Commissioner Conklin. This is not a-
I know we can't take action.
Right, we're not going to be taking action, but-
I want you to think about it.
But I also do want to give, I'd like to ask one of the Thrive members if they would like to just say anything, if you're comfortable doing that. I know Nancy's not here, but just wanted to-
If I get an answer to that question about when you do contracts and bids?
I would say, and the only thing is, is again, I don't want to put someone on the spot where they're not, I think it's only fair that Nancy speak for Thrive, but I would like, if you just want to give a simple statement about what Thrive does in general, I think that's fair. If you're not comfortable doing that, that's fine. We can always wait for Nancy when she gets back from her being gone. You let me, no. Sure, that'd be great. Yep, you bet.
We have two microphones.
And, you know, I don't want to get into a type of a debate here, but Commissioner Conklin, have you sat with Thrive and discussed some of these concerns that you have with the board or?
No, I started off with Nancy wanted to meet, and I just didn't have time. So I asked her for the list, and she wouldn't give it to me, so I thought there was no purpose. If she's not going to, if she can't give me a list of specific things that they do for citizens, there's really no point in sitting down and listening to her speech.
Good evening. You hear me all right? My name's Kevin Mo. I serve on the board, currently the chair of Yankton Thrive. Again, would really appreciate the questions. It's good to have these kind of dialogues. And our preference would be to have Nancy here. Keep in mind, volunteer board member, right? And so, but, you know, I think what I'd like to do is just speak a little bit about the minutes, if you will. You know, I know we had some dialogue around that and was really hoping to sit down and talk about it. I think the real answer is why is the format the way it is, right? And so from time to time, I would just remind everybody, we have four pillars within Yankton Thrive. Business services, which we're really starting to see a need for, and are really excited about talking about allocating investment dollars towards business services, right? That's where your tax, sales tax runs from. Tourism, huge to our community. That's a focus as well. Workforce development, which has been a big, heavy topic, right, over the last 10 years. And then workforce housing, which has been a huge topic. And so I think if we go back with the last two yes campaigns, yes three was a big element around quality of life, right? And then yes four was workforce housing. And so it's why we've really focused on some of those initiatives. We're close to talking about yes five soon, right? So the board, the reason the minutes are, if you think about the economic development function that's within that, from time to time, we do talk about opportunities that come from the Office of Economic Development, different areas that are confidential. So through that process, we tried to do the best we could to have a thoughtful process informing our board. And so within that, we do ask all of our board members to sign an NDA on an annual basis, because we do talk about those kind of things from time to time, not all the time. Yet at the same time, within that, we felt it was really important to ensure that our partners are plugged in, right, to that process, which is why the city manager and two commissioners of this body sit on that board, right, to just ensure that that kind of piece is plugged in.
I'd like to interrupt you for one second. That's part of my problem with this, Kevin, is two commissioners and the city manager get to read the minutes. I don't. You know, our city manager often talks about all the commissioners should have all the information, the same information to make their decisions. Only a portion of our commissioners are getting to see those minutes. You don't trust the rest of us, apparently.
Well, let's keep it, let's keep it civil. I don't know if that's entirely a fair statement. Kevin, go ahead and finish up your thought, please.
And I guess it's emphasizing that we are held under confidentiality from time to time when we're discussing those opportunities. And so I'm not, you know, perfect, no, but I'm not, you know, it was real thoughtful informing the board, which also has representatives from our county, representatives from the school district as well. So I just wanted to speak to that, along with the four pillars of what Thrive does.
Be able to do some things that the city cannot do. And one of the things is be able to work with somebody confidentially on some kind of business operation where they are absolutely not going to show up here and lay all their cards on the table for all the public to investigate and question and all of that, that we can do as a body. And, you know, our request and our kind of long-term relationship with the city as the city is funding a tourism office and a whole bunch of things happening in tourism office, I think that they're, you know, listen very much to the city needs and desires of what's happening in that office and an economic development office, that the city, you know, could fund themselves and have under your direction and, you know, struggle with that confidential piece of an awful lot of private investors not wanting to just show up here and be public about every potential thing they're going to do. But that public-private partnership is approximately with, you know, a request of $460,000 a year to run those two offices. And in private parties in the community putting in another million and a half dollars a year, approximately, to help make all of that happen. And, you know, it's been a very strong relationship over the years. And I'm every year amazed with our, with our efforts to raise money privately that so many private businesses will, you know, show up and write checks annually for that effort to create the rest of that funding. And, you know, and part of that is just the great long-term relationship. So, you know, I'd invite you all, and Bill especially, to sit down and learn about what we've done and what we're doing, and find time, I know you're super busy, but find time to sit down to really understand it, because I sure think if you did, you'd, it would result in a better long-term conversation about you being able to help make good recommendations rather than just show up and say, let's cut half of that funding out.
You're assuming I didn't do my homework. Sitting down with Nancy when Andy isn't going to solve anything. I've done my homework. I mean, what it comes down to, first of all, if you can answer my question, when you do a project, let's say you're going to do infrastructure work, you take bids?
Most of the time that we do, yes.
From everybody? So, or just members?
Oh, yeah. No, not from just members.
Okay, seems like members are the ones. I've had one business person tell me they weren't. You don't do business with them, but the big thing for me is you do everything with TIFs so that benefit the county that the city gets doesn't show up for 20 years. The property tax revenue doesn't show up for 20 years. That places an added burden on the other people. And we've got people on fixed incomes that are looking at selling their houses because they can't afford the additional property taxes. There's over $120 million worth of property that's in TIFs right now, where that property tax doesn't go to the same fund as everybody else, and that's not fair. I've also got reports from, you know, what your assets and expenses are and your solvent. You don't need taxpayer money. But you made the comment that you want your partners to know. If you're asking the taxpayers for $460,000, they're your partners too, and they deserve to know what's going on. I understand there are some confidentiality things, but you can't tell me there are other things in that, those minutes, that shouldn't be for the public. You won't show any of it. And to me, that's wrong. If you're going to take taxpayer money, you should have your minutes on your website for everybody that's a taxpayer to see.
So Commissioner Conklin, thank you for your point. Gentlemen, I want to say thank you for coming up and making a statement. Again, I realize you're volunteers, you're on the board, but I do want to, I'm going to say that the three C's, communication, collaboration, cooperation. One of the things, I think, communication. Please have this discussion with Nancy. I don't want, you gentlemen, again, thank you. I put you on the hot seat. I appreciate your viewpoints and your information, I really do. So I don't think it's fair to keep asking of you. I think Nancy should be able to speak for Thrive. That's what she does, so. But again, I do appreciate also just the questions. I know we are elected to serve. At times, there's going to be tough questions, and I know you're asking probably because you've been asked these questions. And I do appreciate the points you're making. But I would also say, please, please have a discussion with Nancy if you can, if you get a chance.
When I asked Nancy for the minutes, Mr. Mayor, she referred me to Kevin. She wanted Kevin to make that call. And I'm just going to reemphasize again, I don't think, it's a big amount in our budget, 460,000. And I don't think some commissioner should get access to that information, not others.
Thanks for your comment. Okay, thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
I did have one other question about the budget in general. Are we capable or able to take out line items and vote on them separately from the entire budget?
Yes, you can do that. You know, I think the time to do that would be at the public hearing when you make your motion to, you know, you could make your motion to approve as presented with the exception of, or?
Well, and I think Thrive is one of those things, because there's potential conflict of interest with three of the commissioners. Two of them sit on the board and have access to information, the rest of us don't. If you take them off and vote on that separately, they can vote on the entire budget. And then we have another one that his spouse works for Thrive.
I'm going to ask Gras a question here, because there's no reason Bridgette and I can't vote on anything to do with Thrive, because we do not have a quasi-judicial conflict with that.
Ex parte information.
Only to the extent there's a matter that would come before this board that would be ex parte as it relates to Thrive. So when we're talking about budgeting, that's ordinance, that's direct pecuniary interest or a vote of other commissioners?
How do we know if we don't have access to the minutes? If we don't know what's going on in the meetings?
Okay, so again, it comes to the parties. Who's sitting on, so if it's an, if an ex parte matter for Thrive, that's also an action by the commission, and they're on that board for the commission. If the action is ex parte for Thrive itself, I mean, when's the last time we actually had that? I don't think that ever is a thing that we do. It hasn't come up. If it does, we'll cross that bridge, I guess.
So, and I'm not picking on Dave because I like Dave, but his spouse works for Thrive. Isn't that a conflict of interest?
Only to the extent, only to the extent would be direct pecuniary interest for quasi-judicial, because it's, if Thrive's budget is addressed, it's not affecting her paycheck. Does that make sense?
Well, if we don't give them the money, they're saying it's for salaries.
I'm just telling you the threshold, man.
Okay, and I'm going to be a little controversial here. I've sat through three different lectures on conflicts of interest. There was a newspaper article that singled out Commissioner Hunoff and I, because we work for the county. If that's not conflict of interest, I don't want to hear anybody bring it up when it comes to Commissioner Hunoff and I, because this is obviously more of a conflict of interest than anything more.
Okay, so first of all, this comes down to the issue of the budget that the city is going to, at least for this line item, pay to Thrive. That's budgetary, which is an ordinance, that's legislative. Direct pecuniary interest is the legal standard. So as it relates to whether it has an internal impact in Thrive for the spouse of a sitting commissioner, that's up to their budget and what they do with their funding. That isn't directly pecuniary to him as he sits here. So I understand how you're picking nits here with that, but that's just the nature of legislative. The standard is lower. So, yeah, I don't think anybody up here has a conflict of interest for voting budget.
Okay, good discussion. Did you really continue?
I'm just standing for questions. If there's questions or someone wants me to talk about more things, specific or general.
Commission, do we have any more questions for the city manager?
I just want to thank you, Amy, because you put a lot of thought into it while you're sitting at the airport, and you went through it really well, so I appreciate that.
Thank Delta Airlines.
And all, everybody, all your staff too. You know, impressive.
I appreciate all the staff's efforts, and we've already made some adjustments, and they've brought me things and said, probably waiting on this, right? Yes. So they're already aware, they're keenly aware of, you know, things are different now and they're different going forward. But we have a strong leadership team, as you know, and we have a strong vision, as the community knows, and as you know, because you created it. And as I said, we don't sacrifice that integrity of what we want Yankton to be and how we want to leave Yankton, because there's some challenges. We have some responsibilities. We're going to take care of those. And we're going to do that with the values that you put forth with us and continue to be, show integrity as we do them, be collaborative and resilient in that matter. And as things change, we'll change too, and hopefully, we'll be looking at some different numbers in the next year.
Let's hope. Okay, Commission, do we have any more discussion on that, on our budget presentation? So it'd be item four. If not, we'll move on to item five. Anything? Okay. So we're in a determination of the second budget meeting is needed. Now, who, how are we presenting this, this discussion?
Well, if we didn't get all the way through the budget or there were more questions, I would suggest we would have a different day. Typically, in the past, we've done the following day, Tuesday. As you know, that's not an option due to our calendars. And so, you know, if the commission wanted another work session, we can find another time. I probably couldn't find a time right now, but I don't feel like we need that. I feel like I've gotten feedback, and we'll continue to get feedback. But if the commission so chooses, we can work on finding another work session time.
Well, we'll just see how that, again, we'll see how that goes and plays out. Fair enough, Commission? Okay. All right, so we'll get to item number six, future business. This is the other business time for city commissioners to address anything to the commission regarding matters not on this agenda. Again, we won't deliberate this item. We won't make any, we won't act. But is there anything else that we'd like to put on future agendas?
This isn't to put on, because we've already put it on. The discussion about safety at intersections, I mentioned the three by the middle school. I think Dave mentioned there's another one. Just encourage you to take a look at the different schools and anything you notice. Bring some suggestions, so we can maybe make things a little safer for the kids.
We're working on that memo for the 25th, Commissioner Conklin.
Sounds good. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, and right now, I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Meeting's adjourned.